It was a summer or fall. We left.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the March 20th Board of Education meeting. At this time, Ms. Sandy Ayers will lead us in the invocation.
As we gather here today, we are mindful of the responsibility entrusted to us to serve our students, teachers, and community with wisdom and integrity. May our discussions be guided by respect, collaboration, and a shared commitment to the success of every child. We are grateful for the dedication of our educators, staff, and families who support and uplift our schools. May our efforts today contribute to a stronger, brighter future for all. Thank you.
At this time, Currituck County Middle School will lead us in the pledge.
One, two, three, go. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we're really excited tonight. Tonight's school spotlight is Currituck County Middle School. And Ms. Helen Taylor, the principal, is here to lead us tonight.
Good evening Chairman Parker, members of the board, and Dr. Lutz, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm Helen Taylor, Principal of Currituck County Middle School. Joining me is Ms. Lindsay Daniels, our Assistant Principal, several student leaders, and a few of our elective staff members. Tonight, we're going to share a little bit of information about the elective experience at Currituck Middle. So these are some of our student leaders that we have here tonight. We have a couple that are out sick, there's still some things going around, but they had been practicing, so we want to make sure we recognize everybody. And I accidentally left Avery Potter off my list, but I don't want to... He was one of our pledge allegiance, and he's been an active student leader at Currituck Middle, so we appreciate him. So a little bit about how electives work at Currituck Middle. They have the opportunity to take multiple electives over the course of their three years, kind of in an exploratory way to get them ready for what they might want to take in the high school. They allow them to explore areas of interest, develop skills outside that core curriculum. They are allowed to take two electives currently each semester. Band is a year-long commitment, and then Spanish 1, one of our high school courses, encompasses two elective blocks in one semester. And we are currently offering 10 different electives to our student population. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about those. So our first elective we're going to highlight is Band with Mr. Pat Kuppenhaver. We have a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band, and those are split up with the woodwinds and the brass. Occasionally, they have joint practices if they need to come together for a concert or a competition. He does a really great job of starting to tour all of our feeder elementary schools, starting when they're in kindergarten, so the kids know him. He shows them instruments. He goes and then talks to the fifth graders in the spring, that's coming up in a couple weeks, to get them excited about band. And he has a wonderful program. So I want to introduce Ms. Adara Fox and Mr. John Thomas, and they're going to tell you about their band experience.
Hello, my name is John Thomas, and I'm a sixth grader at CCMS. Something band has taught me is how to read music. In my opinion, music is its own language.
Hi, my name is Adara, and I'm a seventh grader with the pleasure of speaking about band with you all tonight. Band is my favorite part of the day for many reasons, like the fact that it strengthens my brain, keeps me loving school, and learning new things.
And our other music offering is Chorus with Ms. McKenzie Short. This is a first year for us of having it year-long for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, and they also prepare for different concerts and competitions. And just this past Saturday, they did for Spring into the Arts for everybody. So that's been really fun to have year-long.
Hi, I'm Ms. Sawyer. Excuse my voice, I got the sickness that all the kids had. But I'm the new art teacher at CCMS. I'll talk a little bit about my class. So my goal is to create a well-rounded and inclusive classroom where students are learning about their interests and getting into that and learning how to craft outside of the school as well. I try to make sure to include history, and science, and math, and all the core electives that kind of are learning a little bit more, but also getting some fun in there. And I have a wonderful student, Kelsey Isabel, talk a little bit more about it.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Isabel. I'm currently in seventh grade. I'm also very happy to talk about art and chorus. Taking art class has helped me learn new art techniques, and has also helped me grow to love group projects. And chorus has also helped me go out of my comfort zone and love performing, and has helped me expand my vocal range, and help my breathing pattern for other things like reading, I mean, running.
Hey, my name is Lauren Cartwright, and I work for the Career and Technical Education Program at CCMS. We have a three-part program. We have an agriculture class, a college and career-ready lab, and then a computer science and business class. Our agriculture class is led by Ms. Kayla Baker, and in sixth grade, our students are able to learn about the environment and natural resources, and how those things relate to agriculture. In seventh and eighth grade, students learn about plant and animal science and food production. The class that I get to teach is the best class. It is the College and Career Ready Lab. This is a hands-on career exploration program where students get to practice problem-based learning, and they are able to explore 11 different career clusters. So in my class, kids are going to learn about emergency management, occupational safety, robotics, computer science, health science, flight and drone technology, hospitality and tourism, child development, video production, home maintenance, and culinary arts. Oh, these are some of my babies. Our last program is the Business and Computer Science Program with Mr. Kelly. This is a computer-based classroom. In sixth grade, students are learning keyboarding and typing, as well as doing career exploration. And in seventh and eighth grade, they are learning entrepreneurship, as well as computer science and coding. We also have an active FBLA chapter, and this week, our students are at their state competition with Ms. Bartolata, so we're excited for them. And then I want to introduce Carly Meads and William Schmidt to speak about our CTE classes.
Hello, school board members. My name is William Schmidt, and I'm here to talk about the College and Career Ready Labs today. So the College and Career Ready Labs have opened up a large variety of job choices for me, and it's just been a really amazing experience.
Hello, my name is Carly Meads. I'm a seventh grader at CCMS, and I'm representing the agriculture class. In agriculture, we learn about plants, animals, and careers relating to agriculture. We also learn about different animals and what they're called based on their age, gender, and purpose. For example, a heifer that's never had a calf is called... Sorry, a female cattle that's never had a calf is called a heifer.
Our next elective is Health and Physical Education with Mr. Weichl and Ms. Whitehurst. Their goal is to get all kids up and moving, and to learn skills that are on their level, competition, and games, and all the health that goes with that. We're really excited, this is our first year as a unified champion school with Special Olympics, and we've been able to get more students involved in that, and have PE that's a mix of all kids in our building, so that's been neat for us this year.
And I'm going to... Let me introduce Mr. Avery Potter, who's going to talk about PE.
Hi, my name is Avery Potter, and I'm a seventh grader here at... Well, they're at CCMS. I'm going to talk about PE today, and one thing I like to do in PE is seeing everyone smile as they walk into those doors, to see like a game or anything else set up. It's a very fun time to see everyone just kind of smile, have fun, and everything. It makes me have a great day, so yeah.
Our next elective is a new optional elective that we're trying this semester at Study Skills. If you're familiar with the elementary model, there's like an enrichment time, and we didn't really have that built into our schedule. So we were able to build this into our schedule for the second semester. It focuses on executive functioning skills. The students learn to set goals, prioritize tasks, learn strategies and ways to help them in their other core content classes. They've learned about social-emotional things, self-regulation, and just building that confidence and leadership. They're able to collaborate with peers in their grade level, and it's been able to foster overall academic and personal growth. And we have Ms. Kenley Yates, who's going to tell you about her experience so far.
Good evening, I'm Kenley Yates, a sixth grader at CCMS. Study Skills has taught me how to manage my time, organize, and prepare for quizzes, tests. Middle school is easier when I'm less stressed.
Thank you. Our next elective is AIG, and it is elective option for identified students at the middle school level. That elective helps extend standards at the grade level, and also includes additional standards for upper-grade-level core courses, and also even high school content. There are various units that they work through from their time from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that encompasses multiple subject areas and content knowledge. It emphasizes research, course and career planning, STEM activities, and that project-based learning where they're able to collaborate. We have two students, Ms. Eliana Perry and Kobe Hayden, that are going to talk a little bit about their AIG experience.
Hi, my name is Kobe Hayden. I'm in the eighth grade. AIG kind of just gives me like a deeper look into some of the core classes like science or reading, and some of the... Excuse me. Some of the units we touched on, like STEM, architecture, and forensics, really just gave me a look of what will come in high school and further on. And all of that is more fun thanks to my managing teacher, Ms. Hughes.
Hello, my name is Eliana Perry, and I'm a seventh grader at CCMS. AIG is a place to both develop skills and confidence in yourself, and a great way to do so is think out of the box with chess, or a challenge like a project, even if it isn't a grade. But one thing I must always remember is that being gifted academically or intellectually is not a bragging right, but it rather means you're better in your own way.
Our last elective is Spanish. We have beginner Spanish that's available in sixth and seventh grade, and Spanish 1 is currently offered in eighth grade as a high school credit. Students learn about grammar, communication skills through those listening, reading, speaking, and writing components. They also get to learn basic Spanish vocabulary and then the geography of Spanish-speaking countries. Unfortunately, our student for Spanish was not able to attend tonight, but we are thankful to be able to offer all of these things to our student population. They're excited, they've been able to learn more, teach us things. So a huge thank you to the teachers that make sure these classes are put on, the planning that goes behind it, our student leaders who have that opportunity, and hopefully will build into their high school courses, their careers, and they'll be able to come back maybe even as teachers and teach some of these classes one day. So thank you all for allowing us to share a little bit about the elective experience at Currituck Middle.
Thank you so much. Emily, comments?
That was a great job, y'all. Well-thought-out remarks, and well-delivered, so nice job on that. Electives, they are so important. Obviously, reading, writing, math, those are the staples, but sometimes taking an elective course, you really get interested in something, and it can be a lifelong love. So, nice job.
Sandy?
You all did amazing. I had the opportunity to meet you all before. You were all so amazing with your manners and excitement to be here. I want to thank the teachers that... The teacher that said, "I get to teach this class." So thank you all very much. You all did amazing.
Melissa?
I don't think they had half of these options when I was in school, so can I come back and just like evaluate the course? I mean, they sound so much fun and just amazing. And I got to see the Spring into the Arts Festival. It was beautifully done. It was nice stepping back in the middle school again. So I just want to thank all the teachers, thank you students, for coming.
All right, Mr. Bass.
Just emphasize what everybody else said. The electives are a great part of school. That's what kept me in school, was the electives. If it weren't for the electives and probably football, I probably wouldn't have done as well as I did. So, great job, guys.
Just thank you all, thank you students for coming tonight. Thank you Ms. Daniels and Ms. Taylor. I'm a little partial. All of my children have attended Currituck Middle. I have an eighth grader there, and I just know how fabulous that school is, so just really proud to be a Raider. So thank y'all. Sure.
Shorter people.
Push in just a little bit, but just make sure you can see me.
Sorry, it's like, oh my gosh. I took a class, I looked like this.
All right, great.
All right, ready? Grab a few, three, two, one. Say Raiders.
Raiders!
Perfect, thank you.
Parents, do the parents one.
You're good, parents, Johnny.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
We did it!
It never happens. It only drops off at my spot.
At this time, we're going to have a recognition of National Board Certified Teachers.
Hello, boards, this is a spot I'm not usually in, but it's a lot of fun to get a chance to recognize our nationally board-certified teachers. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing a group of dedicated educators who have recently renewed their national board certification. This achievement is more than a credential. It is a testament to their unwavering commitment to excellence, growth, and continuous learning in their profession. The National Board Certification Renewal Process, now called the Maintenance of Certification, occurs on a five-year cycle, requiring educators to demonstrate their ongoing professional impact and dedication to student success. Our first honoree is Dana Piero, preschool teacher at Central Elementary, who first achieved National Board Certification in early childhood generalist in 2020, and has now completed her first renewal cycle. Her commitment to best practices in early learning ensures that our youngest students receive the highest quality education from the very start. Ms. Piero? We'll get them all there at once. All right. We would also like to recognize Mrs. Rebecca Palumbo, who initially earned the distinction of National Board Certified Teacher in 2019 in the area of early childhood generalist. This renewal marks her first recertification, demonstrating her continued dedication to high-quality early childhood education. Mrs. Palumbo currently serves as our preschool director, where she plays a vital role in shaping our youngest learners' educational foundation. Ms. Palumbo? Additionally, we celebrate Mrs. Kristy Hodges, who first earned her National Board Certification in 2005 in early adolescent English Language Arts. This year, she successfully renewed her certification for the second time, reinforcing her longstanding dedication to educational excellence. Ms. Hodges currently serves as our district's K-12 Director of Curriculum and Instruction, where her leadership continues to impact teachers and students across all grade levels. Ms. Hodges? I think it's a testament to the learning environment that we are seeking to create and maintain, that we have two directors that went through this renewal process. And it is not an easy process to maintain your certification, nor obtain the original. Dana, congratulations, and I'm very proud to have directors such as Ms. Hodges and Ms. Palumbo working with our staff and students. We are very fortunate. So please join me in congratulating these outstanding educators on their achievement, and thanking them for their dedication to our students, school, and community. Now you get a picture. Come on up.
Everybody together, please. Three, two, one. Thank you.
I mean Dana's dad, too.
That is the best.
That's the best.
At this time, we need to make an approval of the agenda.
I actually would like to make a motion to make Item I, Tolles Creek Elementary, update an action item.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with making Tolles Creek an action item?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, there's public comment. The public comment session is a time when an individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they were signed up, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes. Please state your name and address. And we have one person signed up tonight, Tiffany. What's your last name, so I can get...
Switek.
Switek. Thank you, Tiffany, come on up.
For Dr. Lutz, hello. My name is Tiffany Switek. I am a parent here, so I live at 165 Eagleton Circle in Moayak over in Eagle Creek, so I'm very interested to hear about Tolles Creek, or Tolles Bay. Dr. Lutz, good to see you. I also have taught at Central Elementary, and I currently teach at Moayak. One of the things I wanted to discuss about, and I did talk to Ms. Ayers when she came and visited us at Moayak, is what is the board's plan of action to be more proactive with supporting our students to exhibit a wide range of behaviors in a proactive approach, not only how it impacts their learning, but also the learning of the other students in the classroom? From what I've seen, both as a parent and educator in a few different settings, a lot of the items in place seem to be more reactive, and maybe that's just the lens that I'm looking through, but I was just wondering if there is a plan to have a more holistic proactive approach to addressing that spectrum of behavior.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, ma'am.
That's certainly something that we will be able to meet through MTSS and with our EC Director, but thank you for taking the time tonight.
Thank you.
At this time, we have an update on our Family and Community Engagement Survey data.
Good evening Chairman Parker, board members, and Dr. Lutz. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to share an update on our district's family and community engagement efforts, including insights from our recent survey results. Our Family and Community Engagement Survey was open for a two-week window... Two-week period in February, during which time, we received a total of 104 responses. And this evening, I'm pleased to share with you an overview of the key findings. We asked stakeholders about their relationship with the district. The majority described their relationship with us as parents, guardians, or staff, and additionally, approximately 10% indicated that they were community members or local business owners. When asked whether they had children in the district, and if so, at grade levels, responses covered a range of grade levels: 3% in pre-K, 54% in elementary schools, 40% in middle schools, and 37% in high school. And approximately 8% of our participants indicated that they did not have children currently enrolled in Currituck County schools. When asked which schools they were most connected to, stakeholders indicated connections to all of our schools across the entire district, with the highest being with Currituck County High School. On being informed, when asked how well-informed they felt, over 69% of stakeholders responded with a four or five, feeling well-informed or very well-informed. Overall, more than 90% rated themselves as a three or above, while 10% selected a one or a two. We also asked about communication preferences. Stakeholders shared a variety of communication preferences, with the majority favoring email, social media, text messages, the district website, and newsletters. We are very excited to also see that over 70% of the respondents indicated that they had already engaged with our schools in some capacity. We did ask for additional feedback and some open-ended responses, and so those varied, not necessarily all of them had the same amount of responses that we did have overall. However, factors that may prevent participation in school or district activities included things like the timing of the events, receiving enough advance notice, and scheduling conflicts such as work or sports. Ways in which CCS can enhance its connection and collaboration with families in the community included offering more opportunities for family involvement, such as family nights, increasing communication through email and text, and providing more information on volunteering opportunities. And suggestions for partnerships, or initiatives between CCS and the local community included hosting more community events, fundraising efforts, job shadowing, internships, increasing awareness of the school needs, and expanding community service and volunteer opportunities. We are also very excited to have over 20% responding, saying that they would be interested in serving on our district committee, and that was at varying levels of comforts. So some would like to participate in each meeting, whether they be monthly or quarterly, and some indicated that they would love to participate but are only available like for specific projects. So again, we are excited to have that shared with us, and then... And then, aside from the survey, we held our first committee meeting on Monday night. We did have 11 in total, and it was very successful and productive with sharing of ideas. We very briefly touched on survey results and intend to return to those as we do a deeper dive into specific priority goals for our committee. And I do have full survey responses for you all, to share with you all. We do typically also, every time we have a survey, publish those on our website for others. In this case, just need to quickly review to make sure that there's no personally identifying information that might have to be redacted, so we will have that up by next Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll start with comments or questions. Emily?
I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you've put into this. Monday was really, it was nice to see the turnout and a lot of good ideas, so thank you very much.
All right, Sandy?
Absolutely ditto that. I know the work that you put into making this come to fruition, and I just want to say I appreciate it. Thank you. And I appreciate the parents and the teachers that attended.
All right, Melissa?
I really appreciate the presentation and that we get to see the full survey. Thank you.
Just thanks for your work on it.
Thank you. I know this is something we've kind of added to your plate, so we thank you. And I love the fact that the community wants to be educated about the school's needs. We will gladly do that, so thank you, and thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Great. At this time, Ms. Harrison is going to give us an update on the Teachers Committee for Advocacy and Policy.
All right, so to start, we did decide to change the name to Educators Committee for Advocacy and Policy, because we wanted to include everyone within the district, not necessarily just teachers. We sent out a Google survey to see who is interested and the best times to meet. We had 26 responses from almost every school in the district. And together, we decided, based on the date of the first meeting, will be March 28th in the afternoon. That is the teacher workday. And so we'll have a bigger update once we have our first meeting together.
Thank you. This is part of the work that this board is committed to, of trying to find ways to empower our educators and let them know that they can advocate for their needs as well. So we're really excited, and we're thankful that Ms. Harrison has taken the lead on this, so thank you. At this time, I do want to share a teacher pay resolution that we are going to send over to the commissioners. Jason and I, we talked briefly that we had the pleasure of meeting with the co-chair and chair of the Board of Commissioners, and really felt like it was a really productive meeting in terms of the needs within our county. They were open to open dialogue, and so when we were talking about that we wanted to do a pay resolution, they asked could they join us? So we said gladly. So it is going to take a little time, but this is the Joint Resolution of the Currituck County Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners to Increase Teacher Pay in North Carolina. Whereas, public education in North Carolina is in a crisis, facing severe challenges in teacher recruitment and retention, declining resources, and stagnant salaries that fail to keep pace with inflation in neighboring states. Whereas, North Carolina ranks poorly in teacher salary compared to other states in the United States, with the average salary of $56,559, placing North Carolina at 38th in the nation. Whereas, starting pay in North Carolina at $40,136 ranks 42nd in the nation, and almost $15,000 below the minimum living wage. Whereas, North Carolina competes with neighboring states to recruit and retain teachers, such as the state of Virginia, which has an average teacher salary of $63,103, ranking 25th in the nation, and the average starting teacher salary of $46,250, ranking 17th in the nation. Whereas, the top salary on the North Carolina salary schedule is $55,950 with a teacher when they reach over 25 years in their profession. Whereas, neighboring school districts in Virginia, just across the border from Currituck County, offer significantly higher compensation for both teachers with 25 years of experience and for veteran educators, as teachers with 25 years of experience in neighboring Virginia districts earn over $22,000 more annually than their counterparts in North Carolina, while some veteran educators make as much as $42,000 more per year. Whereas, the 2022-2023 State of the Teaching Profession in North Carolina reports that the overall state attrition rate was 11.45%, which is 3.67 percentage points increase from 7.78 in the 21-22 analysis, and a 3.25 percentage increase from 8.20 in the 2021 analysis. Whereas, teachers are paid less than their college-educated peers in other professions, in North Carolina, teachers earn 24.5% less than comparable college graduates, a trend which has dire implications for recruitment and retention. Whereas, despite being highly qualified, North Carolina teachers are not properly compensated for their work, causing both new and veteran educators to leave the profession. Whereas, enrollment in teacher preparation programs has been steadily declining and is down by a third in the past decade. Whereas, competitive pay is a common-sense solution to attract and retain talent in the classroom. Whereas, the state of North Carolina currently has several billions of dollars of surplus funds which could be used to invest in education. Whereas, despite strong public support for increasing teacher salaries, North Carolina continues to provide teachers with only a minimal step increase that fails to keep pace with inflation. Whereas, in many communities across the state, school districts are the largest employers, and the loss of funding to public schools could devastate these communities and their students. Whereas, North Carolina's future depends on ensuring that all children receive a good education and prepare them to be successful in the jobs of today and tomorrow. Whereas, without urgent investment, public schools will struggle to attract and retain qualified educators, directly impacting student success and the future of the workforce. Whereas, House Bill 192 entitled "An Act to Raise Salaries and Reinstate Education-Based Salary Supplements for Teachers and Instructional Support Personnel" and to direct the North Carolina Collaboratory to Study the Creation of a Dollar Allotment System for the Compensation of Certain Public School Employees, was filed on February 25th, 2025, in the North Carolina General Assembly. Whereas, if enacted, House Bill 192 would give public school teachers a pay increase of 22% beginning with the upcoming school year and provide salary supplements for teachers who meet certain requirements by appropriating $1.597 billion in recurring funds for salary increases. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Currituck County Board of Education and Currituck County Board of Commissioners strongly supports House Bill 192 and any other bill to provide immediate and sustained increases for experienced teachers with a goal of competitive salaries that reflect regional and national averages. Be it further resolved that we strongly urge all community members to immediately contact their state legislators to advocate for meaningful increases in teacher salaries. We're going to have a vote. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
A second? All in favor? Thank you. We are very excited that the commissioners are joining us in this resolution. We are also excited to let our employees know that in our budget that we are sending to the commissioners, we are sending a $3,000 increase in the local stipend that has been added in our budget, and we're hopeful that it's going to be passed, so thank you. At this time, we have an update on a transportation study. I think Ms. Renee Doughty. Thank you, Renee.
Good evening Chairman Parker, Vice Chair Mr. Banks, Dr. Lutz, members of the board, students, staff, Board of Education members, and community members in attendance both here and at home. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to share a little bit about our district's efforts for continuous improvement. Joining me this afternoon is Mr. Chuck Hudson, Transportation Director for Currituck County Schools. We want to share a little bit of information with you this evening regarding planning for the 25-26 school year. Currituck County Schools has contracted with the Institute for Transportation Research and Education at NC State University to help evaluate our current transportation routes and explore considerations for the 25-26 school year. This slide shows just a little bit about I T R E, as we refer to it, and the Tims Project. So for those who are not familiar with school transportation, Tims is the hub for which we put all of our data into with student addresses, and then it helps us to develop routes for our school buses moving forward. A little bit about what Tims does. So this is just a sample. This is not representative right now of any of our routes, but this would be a sample route for Moayak Middle School. We solicit surveys for our families every year about who requires transportation services, and then based on that, input the data with student addresses, and Tims spits out routes for us to utilize as most efficient as possible for the coming school year, based on the information we put into it. So this is just a sampling. Every different color you see on this little map here represents a different bus making a route towards Moayak Middle School, for example. In planning for the 25-26 school year, we asked I T R E to explore a couple of different things, some of which I think we may have touched on a little bit at one of our previous board meetings. The first would be, could the district look to move towards a single-tier transportation system? Single-tier meaning, could all of our schools start at the same time and end at the same time and have their own dedicated buses? For example, Moayak Elementary has its own 5-6 buses with its own 5-6 drivers. Shawboro Elementary have its own 5-6 buses with its own 5-6 drivers. We all started school at the same time, ended at the same time. If we could do that, how many buses and drivers would it take? And what would that cost look like? Second thing we asked them to explore was, looking at our routes as they stand right now, can we explore any ways to be more efficient? You've heard a lot about efficiency ratings with regards to funding for school transportation, so efficiency really does matter. In a county as geographically different as ours is, from north to south, efficiency is a really difficult thing to tackle. So we asked them to look at things like community stops in densely populated neighborhoods, and see if that was something that would help to improve our efficiency. I T R E came back and talked to us a little bit about what single-tier routing looks like. So I'm going to share a little bit about their findings with you tonight. If Currituck County Schools were to move to a single-tier transportation system, again, meaning we all ran on the same schedule, and there were dedicated buses to each school, it would mean that CCS would have to add an additional 25 buses, and of course, then drivers, to execute a single-tier system. And you can imagine that as we looked at that, we thought to ourselves, we are having a difficult enough time having the 43 that we currently have. I don't know how in the world we would find an additional 25 drivers. Also, I T R E pointed out to us that efficiency ratings for transportation would drop significantly, because as we use a single bus to run double runs, it increases our efficiency, because one bus is taking care of multiple schools. So we would run the risk of our funding being decreased because efficiency would decrease. I T R E did come back and say, though, that our routes can be cleaned up to prevent what they consider zigzagging and overlapping to successfully reduce the daily mileage and hours that our drivers and our buses are on the road. There are also a number of densely populated neighborhoods, specifically in the northern region of our county, where community stops would be safe and appropriate. The current state recommendation is that stops be no closer than 2/10 of a mile. For those neighborhoods, like Eagle Creek in our northern section, we know that door-to-door stops are much closer than 2/10 of a mile apart. So that's one of the things we asked I T R E to consider for us. In neighborhoods where it's safe to do so, could we make community stops? And if you've been around long enough, like I have, born and raised, and Ms. Ayers, and Mr. Banks, and some others in here, Ms. Harrison, who rode the bus when they were younger, we walked to the end of the road where there was a stop sign, and that's where you kind of got on the bus. And I'm sure that was similar to most people's experiences when they were growing up to ride the school bus. I T R E also came back that said if we continue with a two-tier system, a longer time buffer is needed to support the two-system routing that we're currently using. And anybody right now knows that we're struggling with our buses arriving to school on time and getting, not just because of a driver shortage, but literally just because we're making door-to-door stops that are very close in nature, and we don't have enough time built into the schedule between the two starting and end times of our elementary schools and our secondary schools. So I T R E did make the recommendation to consider modifying those school and start times slightly to make just a little bit longer of an adjustment between the two routes. So our next steps, what we asked I T R E to do was, clearly, we don't feel confident that we would be able to move to a single-tier system. So if that's the case, can we eliminate all overlapping and zigzagging of routes that are currently in existence? Can we explore community stops and eliminate those stops that are within 2/10 of a mile of one another where it is safe to do so? And again, I T R E is trained and understanding all the laws and regulations about what side school buses can stop on, what sides the doors can open, those types of things. And then provide us with some updated routing so that we can explore the 25-26 school year once ridership requests have been completed on behalf of our district for the next school year. So that's where we are with I T R E. They have a new contract out with us so that we can explore what that next step and next phase looks like with a preliminary findings from them coming back to us in middle May. So we would hope to be able to come back again in middle May to say, this is what I T R E has recommended us do with Tims for the 25-26 school year. I know that it's always hard to make changes, and I know door-to-door stops have been such a great convenience. And then for some of our neighborhoods, it will remain that way because of how far things are spread out. But I do think for efficiency's sake, we do have to look at changing some things within transportation to increase efficiency, maintain safety, but then also look at how we can make sure our kids get to and from school on time.
Emily?
Thank you for that. Yeah, that was good information, and I look forward to seeing what the results are.
Absolutely.
Sandy?
Just thank you. That's very good information for us to have and the public to have. Thank you.
Melissa?
Will we have like a more in-depth meeting if, once we start making these decisions?
Absolutely. I mean, I think once we get some more information from them about what the routes could look like and where their recommended stops are, obviously, a computer system is great, and it does a lot of the hard work for you. But nothing replaces Mr. Hudson, the drivers putting eyes on the routes who drive them every day to make sure, is it safe? Does it make sense? Again, because computers spit out, and we don't realize that's now dead end. Not only to mention, new roads are added almost every day, it feels like, especially in the northern end of our county. So it will mean that once the computer generates this, and they give us all this data and feedback, it's going to still take us sitting down, reviewing everything, talking about what makes sense for us. Will this really work for our neighborhoods and our students and our community? And then we can make some decisions moving forward. So we have enough time to inform the public.
Yeah, because I could see, too, we have a lot of roads where the ditch is like right there. So making sure that we have a very safe spot. You know, how much would it cost us to get the infrastructure or cost of county to have the infrastructure put in so that that area has firm ground? Those are some serious things that, you know, we live in a very swampy area. So I'll be looking forward to, if we can really delve into that part.
Mr. Banks?
When you said 25 additional school buses, I was like, oh my God.
So did we.
Like, what in the world? That's definitely a... That'll never happen. But I do appreciate us looking at our transportation, because it's always been a problem in Currituck, and it's not going to do nothing but get worse. So I'm kind of excited about the results you're going to be bringing us.
All right, thank you. I think this was much needed. It's a hot topic in the community. So I think first and foremost, the community can understand the reason we're in a difficult situation is because we cannot afford to have single routes. We can't afford it. We cannot go to the commissioners in good conscience and say 25 new buses, 25 drivers.
Even if we could afford it, can we hire 25 people?
We can't hire enough people to fill it. So I think that's important that we're doing this work, and I think it's important for the community to know that change is coming, and change is hard. So you are no longer most likely going to get curb service of your kindergartner being able, or your fifth grader to be able to stand on the porch or stand on the doorstep. You don't think about it. They're standing in the door. The bus stops, the student goes out. When you do that 30 times, how much time that adds? And our bus drivers have always just been really kind and nice and done this for people. But on the back end, what happens is Ms. Taylor and Ms. Daniels are in the audience. They're outside every day greeting late buses to Currituck County Middle School. So it becomes, it compounds, because then we can't hold people accountable. because then we can't hold people accountable for instruction because kids are missing 30 minutes of instruction every day. So it's a big problem. Thank you. I'm also excited that they realize we need more time in between. I think some of it is we haven't been, I mentioned this to Dr. Lutz this week. Like when the high school starts at 8:50, we had this idea that the bus needs to get there at 8:50. The bus really needs to get there at 8:30. That's drop-off time. It needs to get there at 8:30 so kids have time to go to breakfast. Kids have time to touch base. So I think what happened is possibly that we built it off the wrong times. But this is why it's great. Thank you, Dr. Lutz. Thank you, Ms. Dowdy. Thank you, Chuck and the team for going outside and getting professionals to say, hey, let's do this right. So thank you. I think Renee, you're on for Act Two.
I am.
The school calendar options.
Back once again, it's that time of the year for us to solicit feedback from stakeholders regarding the academic calendars for the 25-26 school year. Before we look at any drafts, I wanted to take a minute to review a few key aspects, rules, procedures, et cetera, regarding the development of school calendars. First and foremost, JP Napp Early College has granted calendar flexibility as part of its status as a cooperative innovative high school. We will not be reviewing the draft calendar for JP Napp at this time, but rather we will look at that, the calendars for all other schools. And for all the, for the calendar drafts for the other schools, the following notes are applicable. So I just want to make sure we touch on these for newborn members, also for the community who are going to ask for their feedback. I tried to touch base a little bit about some of the restrictions around the development of school calendars. So if you look with me on the school calendar requirements quick reference sheet, we're going to first talk about start and end dates. There is legislation that says that schools in North Carolina outside of cooperative innovative high schools and those schools who have calendar waivers for a multiple reason, multitude of reasons, cannot start school any earlier than the Monday closest to August 26. I'm going to say it again because inevitably when we ask for feedback, somebody's going to say, please start August 19th. And I can't develop a calendar that starts on August 19th because it goes against legislation. So again, we can't start any earlier than the Monday closest to August 26 and we cannot end any later than the Friday closest to June 11th. Unless waivers are granted for weather, there are districts across the state of North Carolina, particularly in the mountains, who get a lot of snow, who get weather-related waivers to be able to start their calendars a little bit earlier or end a little bit later. And then if you're a year-round charter schools or cooperative innovative high school, then you do have special provisions. Again, even if you were to get a waiver approved, currently legislation says you can't start any earlier than the Monday closest to August 19th. Waivers, again, you'll just read a little bit about what that looks like. We did explore, in those years where we had, it felt like hurricanes and snowstorms, you have to have three years' worth of data that shows you miss more than 10 days consecutively in each calendar year before you're even eligible to apply for a calendar waiver due to weather. And while we would miss certain ones, it was never consistent every year that we had a hurricane and snowstorms every year so that we could apply for one of those waivers. Calendar length, calendars must cover at least nine calendar months. They must include either 185 school days or 1,025 hours for students. Currently, we adopt calendars that cover at minimum 1,025, though every year we have a little bit more than 1,025 in our calendar. Ten-month employees must have a calendar that covers 215 workdays. So what that means is the first workday that's scheduled on a calendar from that day, I have to count 215 total days, inclusive of holidays, workdays, student days, all the way to 215 because there have to be 215 days for a teacher's work calendar. Leaves and holidays, you have to have at minimum nine teacher workdays. If you have a calendar that goes by hours, not days, you will always have more teacher workdays than the nine. Local boards have to designate at least two workdays that can be used for leave. We have more than that, have always had more than that. Have a minimum of 10 annual leave or vacation days. Have the same or equivalent number of legal holidays occurring as those designated by the State Personnel Commission for State Employees. We cannot hold school on Sundays. Sorry, Amelia and Kaylee, I know that breaks your heart. And Veterans Day must be a holiday. We get a lot of feedback about, why do you have Tuesday in the middle of November off? It is required that Veterans Day be a holiday for all schools. All right, so that being said, we always get lots of feedback in our survey that we send out to our stakeholders about different things, like why can't we start school earlier? And I wish we had calendar flexibility. We hear a lot about different LEAs asking legislators on their behalf to fight for them to get some calendar flexibility. There are a number of LEAs across the state of North Carolina where state legislators do put forth bills asking for calendar flexibility. Some are approved, some are denied. Many of your tourist towns or LEAs that are near tourist or hot vacation spots normally don't get granted calendar flexibility because obviously the tourism industry relies on a workforce and a lot of times that sometimes is our high school students or our teaching staff who need second jobs. So that being said, we can't start any earlier than the Monday closest to August 26, but there's been a strong push to try to finish first semester before Christmas break or winter break. High school students, it makes a lot of sense to finish the semester before Christmas break so that all exams finalize before that break in service. You don't come back with a week to cram and then a week to test before the semester ends. So calendar option A that you see before you is a draft that finishes the first semester before winter break. That calendar most closely aligns with our CCP partners over at College of the Albemarle. The downside is, no matter which way you play it, there are 11 instructional days difference between semester one and semester two. As I've talked long before and anytime I've done calendar development, that the hardest part about trying to finish the semester before Christmas break without being able to start any earlier than August 26 is it always provides for unequal semesters. And that's a really tough pill to swallow as a former high school principal, knowing my teachers work as hard as they do to try to get all the curriculum in. You want it to be as even as possible. So the caveat to this is understanding that if the board does want to try to finish the semester before Christmas break, that there will be a number of uneven days between semester one and semester two. I will say that in all the years we've attempted to do this, this is the lowest that I've been able to squeeze semester one and semester two to have just an 11-day difference. LEAs surrounding us all have adopted calendars that do this very thing. Some of them have 19 days difference between the two semesters. Some of them have 15 days difference between the two semesters. Our draft has 11 days difference and one has six days difference, though I'm not quite sure they meet the instructional hour limits, but that's not for me to decide. So calendar option A provides the ability to finish the semester, but it does provide a discrepancy between the two semesters. There is a key at the bottom that Ms. Crottk pointed out. It's very helpful, I think, for those that don't understand how to read the calendars. It just tells a little bit about what each day does. For our public trying to read it at home, don't worry, it's going to be posted. It's going to be part of the survey. You'll get to see it up close and personal. Everything else is pretty much the same. Still the two-week Christmas break, still the week of spring break that's in there. So our public will be able to provide us some feedback on that calendar option A. Calendar option B in your packet looks a little bit more like what our calendar looks like this school year. I failed to mention it on calendar option A. As a give and take, it means we had to reduce the number of early release days because we want to make sure we get all those instructional hours in. So you were down to just one early release day a month where it was applicable versus what's in the calendar that we have right now, which averages two early release days per month, when there's not large holidays in those months. So calendar B provides more even semesters. There is only a five-day difference between semester one and semester two, very similar to that of this school year. There are two early release days per month, but semester one is broken up by winter break. So high school students enrolled in semester courses go off on winter break, two weeks off, come back, have a week of cram sessions and then spend the next five days in exams. So what happens next? Our next steps typically in calendar development involve a survey out to our stakeholders. So we send surveys out to our students, to our staff and to our community members, soliciting feedback from them on one, which calendar option do they prefer? And then any feedback. We tend to get lots of things like Columbus Day should be a holiday for everybody, you know? And we get lots of different little opinions on which holiday should fall here and what, why this should be there. So we try to take as much feedback. Some of it is actually good feedback. We take that. We can make some modifications to draft A or to draft B based on that feedback. Then we'll come back in April, present the findings of the survey to you as a board. And at that time, we'd ask for you to provide some type of action on adopting a calendar for the 25-26 school year. Our survey will go live tomorrow as long as you're good with draft options A and B to go out for feedback. And then we'll leave that survey open through April 11th, compile the data and be ready to present to you at the April board meeting.
All right, anybody have any comments? Emily, I'll start with you. Or do you want me to start on the other end? I'll start with Melissa. I'll start with Melissa. Melissa?
I'm good. I'm looking forward to hearing what the people who actually live it, what their opinions are on it, because I know mine, but that's, you know, that has my own biases. And so I'd like to hear from people who are living it.
Same thing, just going to wait for the survey to come back and see where the public and the teachers are at.
Sandy?
Ditto, and thank you for working on this. I know it's not easy. Thank you.
Okay, Emily, I didn't know we were supposed to wait because you know I'm not going to wait, so go ahead.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
I don't even know if you can answer it, but so with option A, I feel like before Christmas, are the kids like amped up, ready to even, can they even concentrate on finals? That's my only concern.
Sure. So I would say elementary babies, absolutely not, right? Like you don't want to test anybody, do any state mandated testing the week before Christmas break. High school students, in my experiences, working both at the early college where we finished the semester before Christmas and working at the traditional high school where we had to wait, come back, do a cram session, I think it's better for high school students to be able to take exams, just like in college. I mean, that's why they do it that way in college. Makes sense to wrap up, take your exams before being on an extended break, not doing things. It also is a nice break for teachers, I think, because teachers are still having to work because they're coming right back and getting ready for exams. Finishing everything up feels like it's a clean break. Everybody can relax and enjoy that holiday and not be worried about what's to come when they come back in two weeks.
Got it.
So just a follow-up. So you think that the teachers would, well, we'll find out when the survey comes in, but that they would appreciate that more than the extra professional development days, early release days that they currently get?
So I think it's a matter of give and take. When we did this survey, so I don't know, you may not remember, but some of you may remember, two or three years ago, when there was discussion about calendar flexibility, we put a question on the survey that said, if granted calendar flexibility, would you like to? And overwhelmingly, the response was, yes, we would like to finish before Christmas break. Now, the hard part is, and you know, Mr. Griffin's in the audience, as a high school teacher, that changes my pacing, right? That changes how I have to operate. So I think that if we were able to give enough advance notice, we were diligent in how we schedule kids at the high school level and to which classes, at what times of the year, first semester, second semester. Those would be important factors that if we choose to go with calendar option A, we needed to explore and look at.
Thank you.
And I'd also say from experience that that, those days right before, like that in-between time is not really instructional. It's usually just reviewing. Like you're going back and trying to get kids to remember all the stuff they forgot over Christmas break because there is a true loss of learning during, two weeks doesn't seem like you'd lose a lot, but you can.
No, we all have, we all have kids, we know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's kind of the downside too, is like, yes, you have more days, but then those days sometimes aren't used as effectively because you have to do just review. So it's hard. I, I would like, is this overstepping? Or if you guys want to do it, since all the other counties are doing it around us, how has it affected their test scores at the high school level? Like, I don't mind doing some Googling and figuring it out and putting it together, but I, you know, that would kind of give us, especially if, since so many of them have an even bigger gap in days than we do, that if their scores are still doing okay, then that would give us a little bit of peace in that.
And it's different for different schools. If I'm a small school and I can creatively schedule and put all my honor sections in first semester in a shorter timeframe, then that's easier. So some districts can afford to do things very differently because of their size. I will say, DARE, Proquemmons, Camden Counties all have a calendar that has adopted a semester one finishing before Christmas break.
Okay, I have a multitude and I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
I was a high school teacher. I would say that 90% of high school teachers are going to say, please let it end before Christmas. Absolutely. My main concern is that we are getting ready to do a major curriculum push at the high school and we're going to have a pacing guide, but then we're going to say, but that pacing guide doesn't work because this semester is 11 days shorter.
So I think what we would do is we would plan for that. So in the work, just like we had to revisit pacing guides with snow days being out, like it would come with, we have to modify depending on what we set as our number of days in the semester. And that's what, you know, teachers kind of have to do anyway. I'm out sick. I can't do exactly what I have to do. So we would know that going in and hopefully that bit of time in preparation would allow us the time to say, semester one pacing guide for this many days looks like this, semester two might look like this.
Okay, and so just from a parent perspective, because we're trying, and this is, I've been completely transparent with Dr. Lutz about this. We are telling people that it's valuable to be at school, but then we're shorting your class 11 days in the first semester. I think if we weren't on block, I would say from the rooftop, let's do this. But we're on block. Absolutely, if we could front-load honors. If we could do that in a perfect world and there's no math one student that's going to be shorted 11 days or no average biology student, if we could front-load our honors kids because they can do a different pace. That concerns me greatly. And then the other concern for me is weather. If we get a hurricane and are out five days, then we're 16 days short and then that's a game changer.
Yep, and we discussed that early on because the fact of the matter is, when you're already down a certain number of days, should a major hurricane, we're not talking about missing a day because the wind was blowing and we couldn't run buses. We missed a week of school, we would have to come back to the board and say, we need to amend our calendar because it doesn't make sense to extend that window much past. Now, again, one of our neighboring districts has 19 days difference, who might be a little concerned about weather on the coast too, but, you know.
They did have a drop in test scores last year, not to out them, but they did. I've looked at the data. So they did do it and their scores dropped.
In full transparency, should a major hurricane come through and we miss a week of school, we would absolutely have to come back to the board and say, we need to amend our calendar. We're going to have to extend first semester into January. And we've done that in the past because of weather and had to modify our calendars during the school year.
And then only other thing that I get a lot of feedback from parents is when there's some months where it feels like we never go a full week. And it gets, so I'm looking at, on the option A, on February 26, where we're doing that workday on the Friday before Valentine's and I know everyone wants to have a great weekend, fun for y'all. Is there a reason we couldn't back that workday to the 17th on that Tuesday? I'm just thinking so we could have, because it's like one week of school, a four-day week, a four-day week, an early release week. Do you know what I mean? Like, it's hard when it constantly does that. I don't know if there might be a reason. Maybe y'all have PD already booked for that 13th or maybe we don't want to be in school on Friday the 13th. There's lots of reasons that could be.
Need to think about that, actually. That wasn't even a consideration, but.
But I know we want to have President's Day. That's, that's great. It helps. But I, I just think sometimes when we do that, short week, short week, short week, early release, it's like sometimes there's five weeks and then I just keep looking at Helen because middle school is just such a, it's so hard to get the children and it does the same thing in the October 25 one. Like, could we pair those two workdays together? I just think it's better for parents. It also gives people an opportunity if they want to go out of town. It's like paired together, go do your thing.
It's just a grading period. That's not a workday.
But it's.
No, it's just a grading period.
It's the workday on the 20th and then we have another workday on the 31st. That's strategically great on Halloween. Well done.
Early release, you mean?
It's a required workday on the 31st.
On option B?
On option B, but like that 20th workday, could that be paired? It's just, I just look, try to look at when we have several four-day weeks in a row. I think that that's, I think that's when we lose people and they start saying, hey, what's going on? Can we get here for a week? Just something, I mean.
I do think that's one of the positives of option A is there are less early release days that fill in so the weeks are more. Your February point about the 13th versus moving it down to the 17th is one of those things that hopefully somebody puts in comments so that we could be like, yeah, that makes perfect sense.
I might as a mom, sorry.
On a Tuesday instead.
Okay, just, I mean, it's going to, I am, I'm just full transparency. If we were not on block, I would not have, I would be celebrating getting out by Memorial Day, but I'm super worried with the new curriculum and just.
And if we weren't on block, we wouldn't even have to be worrying about it because semester exams wouldn't happen until the end of the school year.
Right. That's a whole nother discussion. All right. Now, we're going to have an update and some action on Toad's Creek Elementary and the construction.
For most of the past, most of the past. For most of the past, most of the past four years, we've been talking about construction in some way, shape or form, whether it's been additions to Moyack Elementary School, Moyack Middle School. Ultimately, we broke grounds for late summer of '23 for Toles Creek Elementary School. When the ground was broken, the plan for the project was to have the building open in August of 2025. Some things occurred and that date was moved to August the 24th. We've had the worst winter weather that this region has seen in over a decade. We went back and looked. Ms. Jones, our resident historian, pulled up our, how many days we missed and delays and so on, and we're right there with 2014. It's been a long time since school was this choppy. That weather has affected the construction on Toles Creek Elementary School. We've been working with Sussex for all three of these projects. They have been a wonderful partner. Matt Mullins meets with them regularly. They are responsive to our needs, but they have lost a number of days due to the weather. Forty-four is what their most recent count was. So add 44 days on to the end of the October 24th projected date, and that puts opening school in a precarious situation in terms of when do we want to open up Toles Creek Elementary School? And what is best for our students and best for the community? So this, this board has been briefed. These conversations have been ongoing, and I'm willing to, at this time, turn it over to Ms. Parker.
All right, I'm gonna start with Vice Chair Banks because we actually had this conversation with the Chair and the Vice Chair of the County Commissioners. We had some information from Sussex that, you know, obviously the weather had slowed them down. They've provided a very detailed report of what wasn't able to do each and every day. So I'm gonna let Mr. Banks start.
With the, with the delays, not, not just the weather, some other factors were, were included in that as well, has put us towards the end of December to, to open up a new school. And then you're starting looking at opening up a school in January. And that's if we don't have a hurricane next year sometime. That could put us to the middle of January in all actuality, we start really putting the numbers together. And, and just like Ms. Parker and I were, we talked, we talked with our, our counterparts at the County Commissioners at the, kind of the budget meeting we had, to open up a school in the middle of, middle of January, possibly the middle of January, it doesn't seem realistic to me. Or, or even feasible to, to that degree. Number one, we would have to, we would have to start hiring people prior to the opening of the school. And just say, we don't open up the school until mid-January or later. We have employees just sitting, we're paying employees and we've got all this money we're spending and we're not opening up the school. And I just think as a financial standpoint, I think delaying the open until the following school year is the way we need to go.
Melissa?
I agree. I think it would be very difficult for both students and teachers to have to change their gears completely in the middle of a year, going into a new location, relearning their, just coming from an elementary background, getting kids to walk in a straight line and to, you know, get to their specials classes. That takes a lot of time at the beginning of the year and to have to redo that because they're in a new place, you're wasting so much academic time and I, I just can't agree to that. So I think delaying it until the fall is the right choice.
All right, Emily?
I agree. I think if we're 44 days behind schedule now, with the hurricane season coming up, it's gonna be pushed back even more. So there's gonna be something. So I definitely agree to wait until August of '26.
All right, Sandy?
Well, I think all of what they have all said 100%, but we also have to think about if we tried to move in January, we are asking teachers to give up their, 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 their break. We're asking Mr. Mullins and his team to give up their break. I don't think that's fair. So I, I would absolutely be in favor of moving this to summer.
Okay. As Jason said, we had a really extensive conversation. Obviously, the county's perspective on this could be different than ours. They're in a contractual agreement with Sussex. So whatever issues they have on the due date, we appreciate that they have funded this. That is the county's issues. Our issues are effectively opening a school for the community and for the students and for the teachers. And some people will say, oh, what's the big deal? You just move a school and you move it into another school. It's not one building moving into the other building. It's two different buildings with staff who are then going to have to start at one school and leave and go to another school. The point that Mr. Banks made about hiring staff, we would have to hire a principal. We would be paying a principal salary and there not be a school. Some people might say, well, why would you have to wait? Why couldn't you just hire a principal in January? Can't hire a principal in January. They have another contract with another school unless we got someone who wasn't a principal. And this is gonna be the largest elementary school that we have, so we're gonna want someone with some experience and we're gonna want to get the best possible person that we can get for those students. It's not an easy decision. It's a huge financial commitment. We appreciate the taxpayers and their commitment on this project. It's actually gonna give the county a little bit of time to breathe. If we move this to the summer, it's gonna give a little breathing room. We talked extensively that if it's ready, we could still have the gym use for Parks and Rec. We could still use some classrooms for preschool. We certainly want the community in and enjoying this beautiful building. I rode by it the other day and it's gonna be absolutely amazing. But the last thing we want is for the community to invest this kind of money and then the opening be a complete and total fiasco. We just talked about busing. That bus data doesn't even include trying to put Toles Creek into that. Then we would be changing bus routes mid-year. So I am going to ask if someone would like to make a motion to delay the start of the Toles Creek Elementary opening till August 2026, and I do want to include, but our new middle school zoning would still go into effect in the fall of '25. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Moyack Page, go ahead and post. The school is opening in August of 2026. Y'all know how to message me directly. I'll be ready to answer when I get to the car. Thank you. Moving on.
But not while she's driving.
Not while I'm driving. Board of Education member goals and focus. At the last meeting, we asked each board member to kind of share some goals that they had. This is something new. You know, this group of ours is a little out of the box, but we're excited about the work that we're doing. So what I kind of did was just compiled all the goals together and we're gonna start with eight. And what we hope is that the community can keep track of us and make sure that we're doing what we say we're gonna do, just like we expect everybody within the school system. Children are expected to do what teachers, teachers are expected to do what principals, and so on up the ladder. So these are some of our focus. Some of the cabinet in the audience might want to take notes in case it includes you. We're here to help, but it may. So by June 2025, Currituck Schools will implement at least one mental health activity for students and staff. So Ms. Arrington, sorry, you're first on the list, June 2025. By September 2025, Currituck Schools will implement research-based academic curriculum in all English and math classes K-12. Already know we're on that, so that's great. By October 2025, the Currituck Board of Education and Currituck County Commissioners will pass a joint resolution concerning teacher pay, avocation for teachers, and conduct at least one joint BOE and BOC meeting. By October 2025, the Currituck Board of Education will approve a staffing and logistical plan to secure, I'm gonna add this date, a 2026 opening for Toles Creek Elementary School. By December 2025, the Board of Education will monitor and measure improvements within the Transportation Department by using data that shows a decrease in driver vacancy and a decrease in late arrivals and departures to and from school. By December 25, the Currituck Board of Education will support the creation of a community engagement committee and conduct at least three countywide engagement activities. So thank you, we're already partly there. Number seven, by January 2026, the Currituck Board of Education will see a decrease in the number of non-certified teachers teaching academic classes by 5%. If we get this pay raise, everyone's gonna cross the border and it's gonna be great. Number eight, by June 2026, Currituck Schools will expand extracurricular offerings for students 612 as measured by an increase in student participation in clubs, athletics, the arts, including drama and music. All right, so I'm not gonna worry about that being official. I think it's just our guide, it's our compass to make sure we're doing our work and to kind of keep us motivated in, in that way. I think, gosh. At this time, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It was lengthy, so I'm following my agenda here. Now we are up for student, student board member comments and reports.
Central Elementary School kicked off March by celebrating Read Across America with special guest readers from the community, inspiring students to embrace the joy of reading. Our fifth graders had an exciting opportunity to attend the Currituck County Career on Wheels event where they explored various exhibits. Looking ahead, CES is thrilled to host our Title I Duke Energy Science Night on April 3rd from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. This hands-on event will ignite curiosity and discovery as families engage in exciting science experiments and activities. We all invite CES families to join us for an evening of learning and fun. Currituck County High School crowned our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Heather Bowman, and our Teacher Assistant of the Year, Ms. Jewel Harris. CCHS also recognized our CTE Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jennifer Robinson. Congratulations to all. CCHS Junior Elena Ricks has been accepted to Governor's School for the 2025 Summer Session. This is a tremendous achievement and our entire school community is so proud of you. Our band and agriculture students will be competing in regionals tomorrow. Best of luck to our band and agricultural students. Currituck County Middle School students and staff have been busy celebrating all the amazing things happening at CCMS. Take charge initiatives are present in the classrooms and cafeteria where staff recognize our students who are motivated and making great choices. Students earn prizes and recognition. Hi-Fi Fridays also kicked off this month and student leaders are enjoying greeting everyone on Friday morning. Our quarterly PBIS celebration included basketball, musical chairs, and ended with our Pi's Day celebration. We recently had several students attend and place at the Science Olympiad competition. Our eighth grade band received a superior rating at their MPA performance last week. CCMS has a lot to celebrate and we are so proud of our student accomplishments. At Griggs Elementary School, we kicked off the month with Read Across America, featuring some fantastic guest readers. We are incredibly grateful to our Currituck County School Leadership Team and BOE members for dedicating their time to read with our wonderful students. We celebrated our students with perfect attendance during the second quarter by hosting a Title I Attendance Celebration where families enjoyed a delightful ice cream bar together. Our Student Council has also launched the Star Bar Initiative to recognize and reward positive behaviors among students, and they have excelled in managing this project. Meanwhile, our leadership team is diligently working with our third, fourth, and fifth graders to set EOG goals and ensure they are well-prepared for success. As we wrap up March, we invite everyone to our Red Carpet for Literacy Night on the 27th from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., featuring the fun game, Are You Smarter Than a Third, Fourth, or Fifth Grader? We would be thrilled to see you there. At Jarvisburg, March started with Read Across America Week. Ms. Parker always does a fantastic job leading this event. Thank you to our guest readers. Our third and fourth grade students attended a field trip to Jeanette's Pier while the fifth grade attended CTE Careers on Wheels. It was a great day for all. We were finally able to have our PBIS celebration with bounce houses in the gym after many delays due to the weather. Lastly, thank you to all who made the annual Spring into the Arts a great day for students and families.
JP Knapp, Early Colleges CTE Teacher, Megan Frazier was an NCC AT 2025 CTE Teacher of the Year finalist and was recognized in late February in Colowee in North Carolina as one of the 24 CTE teachers across the state. Although she did not receive the top honor, Ms. Frazier remains a champion in our hearts of our students and staff. We are incredibly proud of her dedication and excellence in education. On March 10th, our JPK sophomores participated in the Job Shadowing Program, engaging with local professionals across various industries. This initiated, this initiative provided real-world exposure, helping students connect classroom learning to career aspirations and set higher goals. This program also strengthened school business partnerships, fostering a collaborative effort to develop a skilled future workforce. On March 12th, Knott's Island Elementary had a school full of future police officers, veterinarians, lawyers, military personnel, chefs, hairstylists, professional athletes, environmental engineers, and medical professionals. Our first career fair was a huge success. On that same day, we invited community business stakeholders to come and share information about their careers with our students. We are proud to say that we had over a dozen career specialists who volunteered to meet with our students and share their career choices and answer any questions that our students had about those careers. We would like to say a huge thank you to all of our industry folks who volunteer their time with our students and also to the Knott's Island community for coming out to the fair and supporting our students. Moyack Elementary School hosted their annual Stream Night on March 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. This event allows for our community to interact with our teachers in a fun and engaging way as students are led to complete a variety of activities to include paper flying machines, capillary flowers, invisible ink, billet of bubble, and we even had the book fair open. Looking forward, we are celebrating partnering with our community for our annual Booster Thon. Moyack Middle School, March is art in our schools month and MMS has a lot to celebrate. Our visual arts students created amazing original art pieces that were displayed in, at the Spring into the Arts. Eighth grade band students shined at the MPA concert. The MMS chorus and sixth and seventh grade band students all gave beautiful performances at Spring into the Arts. The MMS Science Olympiad team traveled to regionals this month. They placed sixteen, sixth and out of 15 events. And some of, some students even qualified to compete at states. We are so proud of our talented students. Shaburo is thrilled to announce the establishment of our inaugural Student Council. To be eligible for this prestigious position, students adhered to rigorous criteria, including upholding exemplary grades and behavior. Those interested submitted applications that feature their academic records and reference letters. The selection process culminated in a detailed interview where an evaluation team posed thoughtful questions and rated candidates using a comprehensive rubric. Our Student Council differs, differs from our student leadership team in that the Student Council is a smaller group of students who serves as a representative body for the student population, focusing on voicing concerns, organizing events, student mentorship, and fostering school spirit. In contrast, our student leadership team emphasizes personal development and leadership skills, featuring a more flexible structure with appointments for morning hallway and cafeteria duty as well as specific classroom assignments for assisting teachers and younger students. Overall, we are excited to expand our opportunities to grow student leaders in our fourth and fifth grades.
All right, our next Board of Education meeting is actually on a Wednesday, April 16th, at 5:30 at Knott's Island Elementary. So we encourage the Knott's Island community to come out. And now it is time for board member comments. We'll start with Emily.
All right, first, I would like to thank the cafeteria staff for providing a lovely turkey wrap dinner for the central office staff, the principals, and the board members this evening between the work session and the board meeting. So thank you for that. FFA plant sale is May 10. FFA plant sale is May 10th. It's kind of far out, but I just want to notate that. And lastly, my son William and I had the honor of attending the JROTC Military Ball on Saturday. It was a lovely event. It was a great night of celebration for what are going to be young leaders of the great United States. It was just, it was a wonderful evening. So I just want to take a minute to recognize some of these students and talk about the ROTC real quick. So the mission of Air Force JROTC is to develop citizens of characters dedicated to serving their nation and community. The goals of the program are to instill values of citizenship, give service to the United States, develop personal responsibility, and instill a sense of accomplishment in high school students. The objectives of Air Force JROTC are to educate and train high school cadets in citizenship, promote community service, instill responsibility, character, and self-discipline, and provide instruction in air and space fundamentals. This event was planned and executed by Iliana Bailey and Elena Sandridge. Emceeing the evening was Victor Shales. Florencia Flores sang the National Anthem. She had a beautiful voice. And Taps was played on the bugle by Benjamin Barnett, which was lovely. There was a tear-jerking POW MIA ceremony emceed by Sean Melick, participating and honoring our prisoners of war and missing in action men and women, were Braden Fernandez, Keanu Melick, Carson Lawrence, Jaden Hasty, and Joseph Thibodeau. Handing out the awards were Kira Carabello and Victor Shales. I was seated where I could see Cadet Carabello guide the students through the take, shake, and salute process. She conducted herself with such confidence and grace as she guided them through accepting their awards. During this wonderful event, we learned that Jason Doughty, a junior, received a scholarship worth $30,000 paid for by Air Force ROTC, where this summer he will be attending an eight-week rigorous aviation program at Fairmont University in West Virginia, where he will complete their program that consists of academics and hands-on flying. At the end, he will be prepared to test for his personal pilot's license at the age of 17. So I just wanted to acknowledge Senior Master Sergeant Amy Hartman, who heads up this program and puts her heart and soul into these students. Congratulations to her and her cadets for all of their hard work and dedication.
All right, Sandy?
To piggyback on Emily thanking the school nutrition staff, I just want to say, I believe it was Melissa McCoy, the Moyoc Elementary School school nutrition manager, who made those dinners for us. So thank you to her. Congrats to all of our Teachers of the Year and our Teacher Assistants of the Year. I also want to thank staff administrators, teachers, for all the work they do. With the majority of this board being new, we've had a lot of questions, phone calls, emails, inquiries, recommendations. And everyone has gone with the flow and been such a great resource for us. So I just want to express my appreciation for that. Secondly, I firmly believe that strong schools are built on strong community relationships. And the newly established Family and Community Engagement Committee plays a crucial role in fostering these connections. I really encourage all students, teachers, parents, businesses, community leaders to attend these meetings. Successful schools only strengthen the community as a whole. And I am done. Thank you.
All right, Melissa?
I was really excited to do Read Across America at Central Griggs, which was my alma mater. I was there K through six, because that's what it used to be, and then at Jarvisburg. So it was very special getting to do reading to kids, which is what I loved the most about being a librarian and at the schools in Currituck. They were all very welcoming. The students were wonderfully behaved. It was just a great experience overall. And then I'm going to do another Currituck Education Foundation fundraiser. Our next one coming up is Jersey Mike's Day of Giving. This is March 26th. On that day, everything, all proceeds, so it's 100% from Jersey Mike's goes to the Currituck Education Foundation. So we hope you buy a sub that day. If you buy anything in March, you'll be given the opportunity to support the Education Foundation with like an extra percent. But that day, it's everything, so don't worry about making dinner. Stop by. And we are, the Education Foundation awarded $400 or $500 grants to teachers this month for a variety of things and at a variety of schools. So that was exciting.
All right, Vice Chair Banks?
Yes, first, I would like to just recognize one of my former and favorite English teachers who passed away this month, Miss Sylvia Sparks. She was with the school district for over 30 years. Her husband was also an English teacher for over 30 years with the county. So our thoughts and prayers with that family. Also, I had the opportunity to judge the FFA competition at the Extension Center, listening to some kids speak who were given a variety of topics, and they were given minutes to prepare for those topics and be able to present those to us. It's quite impressive for some of those kids to do that. Ms. Parker and I have met with the County Commissioners in a budget meeting. We are advocating, and this entire board is advocating, for teachers' raises. Those raises, the majority of those raises have got to come from state level. We can do a resolution, but it's going to take the staff and the community to put pressure on your state legislators to get this passed. We can sit here and say it all day long, but until they get the pressure at the state level is where it's going to have to be. So, but I also just like to say, just keep, for us as a board, just keep an open mind with our commissioners and keep that line of communication open. And just don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Everybody really touched on everything. The event with Emily at ROTC was absolutely incredible. For parents who aren't aware of that program, if you have a high school student that's thinking about the military, it's really a great program, and you really should consider that. Just a recap for everybody, that Tolles Creek is August 26th, but our new middle school zones are August 25. I don't want there to be any confusion. It's interesting, because I had a text right before I came in about a parent asking about middle schools, because I know the elementaries are getting ready to do visitations. So we want to make sure that everybody's clear. Just to the community, we need your support. We need you to advocate. We do feel like there's a new dawn in Currituck County, and we have a great relationship with our commissioners, and we feel positive that they're willing to come to the table and speak with us. But as Mr. Banks said, we're going to need to have some... Gosh, I can't talk. We're going to knee. Thank you. We're going to make sure that we talk at the state level, and we're going to have to get that done. So please, as stated in the resolution, please contact your state legislator and let them know that you are in support of an increase in teacher salary. We're going to see great things when we get certified people in every classroom. We have substitutes that are doing amazing. We have people who are volunteering that are doing amazing, but we're actually asking them to do a job they haven't been trained to do. So that's really difficult when you're asking someone to do that each and every day. They're coming in force, and they're doing great. But our children deserve more. So with that said, I think we're going to turn things over to Dr. Lutz.
To piggyback on contacting the legislators, Christina, when we post the resolution, we can put their links right... Live, click. Okay. That would be great. Speaking of that, I will be heading to Raleigh next week to meet with legislators around teacher pay specifically. Superintendents from across the state are going to converge on Raleigh on the 26th. We have very specific topics, and teacher pay is at the top of it. So I'll look forward to sharing that visit with the board. We mentioned Teacher of the Year. Great week celebrating them. But in late May, we're going to come together down at Sanctuary Vineyards and make a really special day for them and their family. So we'll get that date, too. I hope it's on your calendar. Next week marks the beginning of our district-wide safety drill window. During this time, schools across the county will conduct important safety drills. Putting that out there, we'll try to make sure we communicate with the public. Kudos, Ms. Boyer. I thought the feedback on the survey, when you're living in three, fours, and five territory and 90%, that's a great job on your part, outstanding work on our principals. Make sure we get that pushed out. We want to extend our sincere appreciation to the Currituck County Sheriff's Office for their ongoing partnership and commitment to keeping our schools safe. Their support is invaluable in helping us maintain a safe and secure learning environment for all. And lastly, I'm always going to mention, we had a great Special Olympics event at the high school on the 7th. Again, Jamie, thank you for your work there and for the county for their support as well.
All right. At this time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Thank you. Good night.